Call the Tuesday, March 11th, 2014 Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order. We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Lasco.
Here.
Alderman Kahnman.
Here.
Alderman Joe.
Here.
Alderman McMinniman.
Here.
Alderman Thailand.
Here.
Alderman Dove.
Here.
Alderman Griffin.
Here.
Okay, if I could get an approval of the February 25th, 2013, 2014 Committee Meeting, Madam.
Move approval.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. The Treasurer's report, Treasurer Rintelman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Corporate Fund Monthly Cash Report for the month of February, we had a beginning balance of $5,171,791. Receipts for the month of February totaled $7,611,303. Disbursements totaled $9,265,124. So our ending cash balance in the Corporate Fund at the end of February totaled $3,517,970.
Any questions for the Treasurer? Can I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Office of Budget Management Contract Report. Any questions for the Director?
Question?
Yes. Alderman McMinniman.
On the first page of the report, this would be item number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, the sixth item. It's Dell Marketing purchased 25 laptops and 50 monitors. The question is, what was the address of that supplier? This was a City Water Light Power Electric Transmission and Distribution. It was a sole source, $27,000.
Are you asking where Dell is located?
Was that a...
They're a Texas-based company, is that what you're...
Right. Who was the contracting entity? Was it the corporate, at the corporate level, or was it a local vendor here in Springfield area?
Honestly, I don't know that off the top of my head. That would be a question for purchasing. Craig might know from CWOP, though.
Dell is the standard that we're using. I would assume we're not buying them locally, we're buying them in a site like this, we're buying them from Dell Direct.
Okay. Just unclear from the description who the seller was. So you think or you know it was Dell?
I wouldn't bet my life on it, but I'm pretty confident that it's Dell Direct.
And I would tend to agree with him. I think he's right. I think we do buy directly from corporate.
Wouldn't bet my life, but I'd bet yours.
If you'd like me to find out for you, Alderman, I'd be happy to, but I, standing here right now, I'm not 100 percent sure. I would just presume that it's Dell Direct.
Let's dig into this a little bit further. This was a sole source purchase, so were these custom softwareed laptops?
It says sole source because we've standardized the network on Dell machines. You can't buy Dell machines from somebody other than Dell.
Okay. Just checking into this, since we all are promoting local purchase when we can. So that answers that question. I've got two more. Go ahead. This was Economic Development. This is the next item down. It's a $75,000 capital development block grant. And the question here is, it'd be helpful to get some more description on some of these. This one here just says Springfield Living Center. Is there a dress? I mean, something a little bit more descriptive, Mike?
Sure. Yeah, it's a standard contract for assisted ramps, and it's our annual contract with ramps and accessibility for seniors and disabled individuals.
So Springfield Living Center then coordinates the construction of a volume of ramps at different locations, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And we do it as a bundle because they trickle in over the course of a year. You know, we do ones, rather than do, come in here and bring one every month or two, we allocate $75,000 to them, and then we build it up. If we spend more, we'll be back for some additional funds, but it's typically an annual request we make for the Council.
Okay, thanks a lot.
I can give you the precise address.
No, it's good to know what these are about, because occasionally we get requests for ramps, and it's good to know, it's a good reminder to know how this works.
Alderman Griffin.
Director McCarty, on the second page, the fifth one down, the Ross Agency, is that workers' comp?
Excuse me?
On the Ross Agency, about professional investigative services.
Primarily will be utilized for workers' comp, yes. If there's an extraordinary situation that arises, such as what we had a year or so ago, where we would utilize them outside of the workers' comp realm, then they will be available for that as well, too.
Alderman Dove?
Director. McCarty, sorry. On the Public Works one, the Ben Mar with Guben and Guben.
Which one are you referring to?
The one, two down from there, second up from the bottom on the second page. Is that $50,000 in addition to $345,000? We already paid them.
That's a question Public Works will have to answer.
That's the agreement for the moving expenses.
So 395 is what we actually paid them in total?
Well, they will reimburse them up to, I think it's $50,000 for the moving expenses, for the relocation.
Okay.
Maybe less than that.
Thanks. Alderman Simpson.
Mr. Mahoney, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. We reimburse them up to how much?
I think it's up to $50,000 for moving expenses.
What was the $350,000 for?
That was purchase of the property. The purchase of property, so it's what the Corporate Street underpassed.
Okay, got you. Then the $50,000, how does that break down? I mean, it's under the Federal Relocation Act, but how did it break down? Did we...
Well, as they move, they're in the process of moving right now, so it's for the moving expenses for the, moving to the new location. So they'll submit their, or pay it, and we'll pay them. Up to that amount, up to $50,000.
So we've not paid them anything yet?
Not yet.
Other than the $350,000 for the property?
That's correct.
But this, so this $50,000, this is just a request? So we haven't issued any kind of check or anything to them?
Double check, I don't think we have yet.
Because I thought that there was a formula that, is the formula different for businesses than for residences?
It's what, we follow the federal guidelines that are established, and that was established through the negotiations, so it would be the same. Let me check, I'll get you more information.
If you would. I had another one for you, I think. Maybe that was it. That was it for Mr. Mahoney, thank you.
Any other... Yes, Alderman Simpson.
Mr. McCarty, the last one on the second page, sealed competitive bids. I think this Council at one point asked you to provide the cash outlay of monies that you were expending with regard to this whole fleet consolidation. Have you done that at all?
I'm pretty sure that we put something together and sent that out. I have to go back in time and look at it, but I know we did the exercise.
Did it include this $89,000?
For the lifts? No, at the time, we hadn't expended it.
Okay, so then you're, we're expecting then to have something else sent to us that includes this amount of money?
Sure. Once it's all done, we can do regular updates as often as you'd like. We keep a running tally, so it's really not much of an issue. We just send you the spreadsheet.
I mean, once, what's done?
Well, we're continuing to expend monies on this fleet consolidation. Some of it was expended last year, some of it will be expended this year as we continue to do renovations and get the building ready.
Yeah, well, I think, I don't know about the other Aldermen, and if they don't want it, I'd like to see, when you expend monies, I'd like to see a spreadsheet indicating what those expenditures were.
Sure, that's not a problem. We keep a running tally, so we can certainly send that to you.
Great, thank you.
Have we went over that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Any, Alderman Simpson, any other questions?
Can you make that available to us so that we can go over it for the next, maybe the next...
Sure. I can get it to you this week. That won't be an issue at all.
That'd be fine, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm done, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Any other questions in regards to Office of Budget Management Contract Report? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to ordinances tabled or remaining in committee. This is hopefully going to be a process that we'd like to try to either move some of these along, fellow Aldermen, or remove them. I'll read them, and then I know we've got something we'd like to do. Ordnances tabled or remaining in committee, 2011-104, 2012-123, 2012-226, 2012-376, 2013-128, 2013-174, 2013-193, 2013-250, 2013-260, 2013-266, 2013-376, 2013-397, 2013-457, 2013-469, 2013-470, 2014-022, 2014-024, 2014-058, 2014-059, 2014-69, 2014-085. Ah, there. That's why we want to try to take a look at some of these tonight. So to start with, I would like to remove, Alderman Turner and I'd like to remove 2013-128, and Alderman Turner would like to remove 2013-250, and delete. Any other Aldermen? Yes, Alderman Griffin.
Right now, 2012-226, one of the older ones on there was something that was actually coming to the Mayor's office and myself. That was really being somewhat driven by the Springfield Police Department, and we've had some, some changes in there recently. I know the Mayor's Assistant, Mr. Logan, and the Chief are working together to try to reintroduce this, bring that. We have no problems with this letting, letting it go away at this time, and we can bring it back under new number. That's okay, Chief, you... And then, so, I mean, we're happy to get it out of the way for now, but that will be coming forward now that the Chief of Police has been confirmed, and his intentions is to bring this forward, I do know of.
Alderman Edwards.
Yep, you remove anyone that I'm a co-sponsor of, or a sponsor, with the exception of 2014-022.
So let me just make sure we're clear.
I can go through this real quick.
Okay.
Any that's got my name on it, or co-sponsor, the other co-sponsors will have to carry it. You can withdraw my name and the ordinance.
All right. So the question would be, can we remove from the other co-sponsors, can we remove 2013-193?
Yeah, as far as 193, I'm a co-sponsor. McMinniman and Dove are, I think probably were all, that's kind of a moot point now.
Are we in agreement? We can remove that?
It's a moot point.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Edwards, can we...
That's the one he just saved.
He wants to hold that one.
That's the map.
Right, that's the map. Just one second. We're going through here. Okay, anybody else? Alderman McMinniman.
2013-260, that has to do with first professional service contracts. I'll bring that back, that's a new number with some modified language later.
Okay.
What number?
2013-266.
260.
2013-260, he's going to remove.
And another one is 2013-457. That one is a moot point, too, since we've released the executive session minutes for the Oak Ridge Cemetery Discussion.
Correct.
And if it's regarding Alderman Edwards, 2014-022, that's the ordinance that would provide a remap for the wards for the next election. When that was introduced back on January 14, two months ago, we held it in committee to allow, for two months, to allow Aldermen to bring in any changes or amendments. So the two months is up, and so I'm okay to bring that out for consideration by the Committee at this point in time. I think it's overdue. All the Aldermen have had the maps for a full year, and then it was introduced as an ordinance two months ago.
Alderman Edwards, it's your ordinance, what do you have to do?
Yeah, because it's under a FOIA, let's let it go for 30 days.
Okay.
Let the FOIA work its process, and then we'll bring it out.
Alderman Simpson.
Corporate Council, is it my understanding from the email that you sent out that if we do not act on them, and the date comes, by which, it's a year or more, they automatically come off?
Well, I, under the rule, which is my understanding, it's, there's a difference between the written rule and what the past practice of the Council's been, is if 180 days passes between the date that it goes to committee at the whole, and nothing happens, the way the rule reads strictly is, it just drops off unless there's a motion to keep it in committee for an additional 180 days. But I think...
So in essence, it would, according to the Corporation Council, anything, so really it'd be 2011-104 to 2013-266, the way I understand it. That 2013-266 was brought on July 19, 2013. Correct?
Yes, now, and what I don't know, what I don't know is whether there have been any intervening motions to keep it on for 180 days.
That was not the first time. There have been subsequent motions to keep it on. So does that mean that every 180 days, there has to be a motion to keep it on, or does it just need to be one to keep it on?
Every 180 days, there needs to be a motion to keep it on, otherwise it dies, according to the way, according to the way the rule reads.
Okay.
Alderman Simpson.
2011-104, unfortunately, I don't know, but I don't believe that there are votes to address and pass that ordinance.
Okay.
And it is with regret and chagrin that I say to go ahead and take it off.
Okay. Are there any other Aldermen?
I just have a question.
Alderman Simpson, that's it?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Alderman Kahn.
Just a question to you, Chairman Joe, with regard to 2013-128 on increasing the F, making stronger efforts to collect money owed by the city. I thought that was a good ordinance that you...
Alderman Turner and I are working on a new ordinance.
Okay.
And we'll be reintroducing that.
Well, that's great. I'd like to, but so if possible, I'd like to join you guys as a co-sponsor.
We'd be honored to have you.
Alderman Edwards.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, would somebody from the Mayor's office like, for the expediency, like to address the ones that are sitting there sponsored by the Mayor in front of the Committee? Maybe a corporate counselor or somebody could tell us what they're going to do.
There's a lot of them. Yeah, and I have not had a chance to speak with the Mayor on this since I found the rule that talks about the 180 days, so...
So we've made a, Alderman, we've made a good start tonight. So hopefully, the Administration will see that, and we'll finish this in two weeks. All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chair, oh, this is not a deletion request. This is, we've got two ordinances that were held in committee that we need to discuss tonight, and those are 2014-058 and 2014-059, have to do with commercial lots just north of White Oaks Mall, and the parties have worked out an agreement, so we can, I'll make a motion when we're ready to discuss them.
Okay. Seeing no other issues with the ordinances tabled or remaining in committee, Madam Clerk, could we discuss ordinances for committee consideration?
Just a question for clarification for the Corporation Council. Do we, these, I don't see intended the Chairman to remove these from the agenda. Do we need to take a vote, or somebody needs to make a motion to remove those from the agenda?
I don't believe a withdrawal requires a motion.
Oh, okay, as long as the sponsor says they want to withdraw them, then that's all.
I think that's correct.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Okay, as I understand it, we're going to start with 2014-058.
Correct.
Okay, 2014-058 is an ordinance approving the location and sketch map of the redivision of lots 1 and 2 of White Oaks Commons, located at the northeast corner of Isles Avenue and Veterans Parkway for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Second move to consent.
Okay, there's a motion and a, a motion and a second for the consent, any discussion? I know that we had an individual that signed up to speak in regards to 2014-058 and 2014-059. Maureen Bloom, is Ms. Bloom?
Yeah, we, let me, Mr. Chair, Maureen Bloom is the White Oaks Mall manager employed by Simon Property. She's been out there for many years, and she today talked with the purchasers of the three lots north of Isles that are the subject of this ordinance and the following ordinance having to do with redivision of two lots to three lots. She was concerned, and others have been concerned about some parking issues, and also regarding traffic issues for the Ring Road that exits, that provides exiting for all the traffic leaving White Oaks Mall to the north onto Isles. And an agreement and understanding has been discussed whereby Public Works will be monitoring the new signals that would be placed at the corner of Isles and the three lots there, so that particularly during the months of November and December, there will be appropriate opportunity for all the traffic leaving White Oaks Mall to get out to Route 4 and the other places. And so with that understanding, White Oaks Mall will not have objection to the redivision of the three lots, of the two lots to three lots at what's called Commons, the Commons, White Oaks Commons.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor for the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes.
2014-059 is an ordinance regarding the variance request of Section 153.158B2 pertaining to lot arrangements for the redivision of lots 1 and 2 of White Oaks Commons located at the northeast corner of Isles Avenue and Veterans Parkway for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
There's a motion for the consent agenda and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
2014-088 is an ordinance amending Chapter 36 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordnances as amended by adding Section 36.49 requiring City Council approval prior to across-the-board wage increases to municipal employees not represented by a union.
Motion?
Move to debate.
Second.
There's a motion for the debate agenda and a second, any discussion?
Seeing... Just, I got a question.
Alderman Kahn.
Why is there no fact sheet attached to this proposed ordinance? Does anyone know?
It's not possible to make a fiscal analysis until a future ordinance would be introduced that would set forth the, what's called the cost of living adjustment for non-union personnel. The, the potential fiscal impact would be as follows. We've got about 400 employees that are non-union employees that work for the city. Half of those work for City Water, Light, and Power, and one half work for the corporate side, and the payroll for that 400 employees is roughly $40 million. Now, the last three years, by executive order, Mayor Houston has granted 3 percent pay raises to that category of 400 employees. So if you do the math, it's 40 million times 3 percent is 1.2 million in spending. So that's a 1.2 million spending decision across, across many of the departments of city government. So there's a range of fiscal impact from zero all the way to 1.2 million. The impact of this ordinance would be twofold. Number one, it allows the City Council and the Mayor to cooperatively reach agreements on what the appropriate spending is for cost of living adjustments for non-union personnel, and get back to the way we did it many years ago when Mayor Houston was Mayor the first time, and Mayor Langfeller came in, and he did it that way, at least for the first year of his term of Mayor. The second impact is, we, given the financial condition of the city, we cannot afford to overspend in ways that aren't justified. So when you go back and you look at the, if you go back and look at the national labor statistics, the national cost of living, the national CPI, Consumer Price Index, changes in the last four, in the last four of the last six years have been, has been less than what the city has granted in cost of living adjustments to our non-union employees. By that, I mean, if you go back in time, our cost of living adjustments that by executive order the Mayors have granted have been in backwards order, 3 percent, 3 percent, 3 percent, a half a percent, 1 percent, and 4 percent. But the CPI actually nationally, and it might be more or less for the Midwest region, has been as follows, 1.5 percent last year, 2.1 percent, 3.2 percent, 1.6 percent, negative 0.4 percent, and 3.8 percent. So given the city's fiscal condition, it's really appropriate to hold the line on spending, particularly since all of this spending adds to our pension cost ultimately, and we have to be mindful of the growing pension liability of the City of Springfield. Thank you.
Alderman McMinniman, that was a rather lengthy answer to my question, but I...
There is fiscal impact, Alderman Kahn, I agree.
But the new amended rule, 6.18, requires for ordinances that don't have a fiscal impact, they still have, are supposed to have an information sheet if you look at the amended rule and see if maybe you could comply with it. I don't think, it's not in the rule, we amended it since last spring. Alderman Turner and I had an amendment, so I'll email you the amendment, maybe you can...
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion for the debate and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Let's do a roll call. There was one aye and one no. Madam Clerk, can you take a roll call? Vote, please.
We can vote on the machines.
Or vote on the machines. All those in favor vote yes, all those opposed vote no. Voting is open. Motion carries, seven to two.
2014-89 is an ordinance approving the tentative agreement with the operator, plasters, and cement masons, local 18 from March 1st, 2014 through February 28th, 2017.
Move to consent.
Second. There's a motion for the consent agenda and a second, any discussion?
I said...
Yes, Alderman Edwards.
We, I thought we went down a road where we talked about discipline and records being shredded, and I see that that's still in there.
I'm sorry? I don't know.
Disciplinary suspensions will be removed from their employment record after five years of no disciplinary action. I thought after the little shredding incident and all that, we were going to reevaluate that and have our employees, whatever's in your records, in your records.
Well, obviously, it's a mandatory subject of bargaining. I have improved it in this bargaining unit from the three years, which was the status quo, up to now to the five. You've got to understand, I'm bargaining within each unit. That happened in one bargaining unit. It didn't happen in this one. I, so obviously...
I understand that, Stephanie, but the blade works both ways. Because when you give a raise to another union, don't they come to you and say they got it?
And I'd say, and I got something returned from it. I mean, going to give you...
Well, so, you know, it works both ways. But I strongly feel that we need to look at this, and I understand your position, you moved from three to five, but next time, it needs to move from five to seven to out of the clause. So, I mean, that's just how I feel about it. We continue to keep going down this road, and the cities will want to keep paying for it over and over. So...
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor for the ordinance to be put on the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
2014-90 is an ordinance authorizing payment to Mark Putin, an Office of Public Utilities employee, for settlement over workers' compensation claim for case number 12WC020619.
Move to consent.
Second. There's a motion for the consent agenda and a second, any discussion? Yes, Alderman McMinniman.
Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Chair, this workers' compensation claim refers to the injured employee is a security officer, and that he suffered injuries made 24, 2012, following a motor vehicle accident. So could we get some information about the nature of that motor vehicle accident, and whether any tickets were issued either now or prior to next week's meeting?
I don't, I certainly don't have the information now. I can try and check that and get it to you before next week.
Thank you.
So we can just send that to Joe Davis, and he could send it to everybody? Okay. Alderman Simpson.
Scratch in my head.
You can take your time.
Because I don't understand, there's a committee that used these, and they're supposed to ask those questions. I don't understand the point of us getting additional information, because are we going to then send this back?
I interpreted it just as whether we're, if there's a chance of us pursuing subrogation against a third party, if it turns out like, that our employee was injured as a result of negligence by a third party, we might be able to file...
Oh, is that your interpretation of Mr. McMinniman?
That was how I interpreted it, at least.
That's part of it, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Twenty fourteen oh ninety-one is an ordinance amending contract CC twelve oh nine with Disability Management Network Limited and Illinois Corporation doing business as Triun Health Group Limited to allow staff per section two, staff requirements to reside within Sangamon County or within a thirty-mile radius of the borders of Sangamon County for the Office of Budget and Management.
Move for consent. Not a second for consent, how about the debate agenda?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for the debate agenda, any discussion?
Please.
Alderman Griffin.
I just can't get a little more explanation of that. Well, I read through this last night, highlighted this, and wrote myself notes and have no, I don't know enough about it. Can I, my only note on it is why?
It's actually, it's actually very simple. The nurse that we had, that was our case manager, retired, and they hired a new nurse who doesn't live in Sangamon County. She lives in Macon County. So that's the reason for the request.
You're kidding me. No nurses in this city?
I'm sure we have nurses in this city and in this county. We do not hire them. Triun hires them, and this is a specialty field. They felt like the best person for this position is someone who resides in another county.
But they knew about the provision in the contract, and they're wanting to come in after the fact? They already made the hire rather than come to us first?
Well, I believe the hire was made because they were, and when I say they, actually more the city was in a bind, they needed to replace the nurse case manager. They did a search and they felt like the best candidate to fill this role is someone who does not reside within the county. I think their primary concern in searching for a replacement was somebody who they felt would be the most qualified and could do the best job for the City of Springfield.
I understand, Director. I'm not, I'm not dragging you on the coals on this one. I am just merely questioning that if we had a contract that required a Sangamon County resident for the contract purposes, why they didn't come in and at least either A, hire the person on a temporary basis before bringing this before us, or B, why they didn't go to you first and say that they needed relief from the contract in order to hire the person they needed due to the specialized nature of the field?
Well, and this is something that would have been dealt with more with someone in Corporation Council's office, not necessarily Todd, and it might even been before Todd was here. Chris Renard, who was our workers' comp liaison, is the one who would have dealt with Triun on this. She's the one who talked to them on a routine basis, so I could get more information from her on how this all transpired and get it to you. But I do know that we were in need of a nurse case manager, and for whatever reason, either they didn't have somebody they felt was qualified, maybe nobody from Springfield or the area applied, I'm not really sure. Again, this is more of a specialty area, so that could be one of the reasons why they were having a difficulty finding somebody that could fill this position from within Sangamon County.
Chris did come to me. My understanding is soon as it became an issue and we got this on first reading as soon as we were able to, it is, as Bill mentioned, one of these things where we had to have somebody to do this. Also, it's my understanding that this is basically a situation in which the records are reviewed, the nurse does not go actually onsite or doesn't actually talk with the people. The nurse reviews the medical records to make sure that the bills are appropriate and in line with the medical records.
So why was it, why did we have the stipulation in the contract to start with then?
I can't answer- My assumption is that we didn't foresee the problem of finding somebody who would be available and lived within the residency requirements at the time.
And that's fairly accurate. At the time, they had somebody in mind who lived here within the county, and we stated it was our preference at the time to try and have somebody within the county, but in this particular instance, again, for whatever reason, we'll have to get you the details, they were, felt it would be best to go with this particular individual who lives in Macon County.
Alderman, we have several want to speak. Alderman Simpson?
Okay, I guess I don't understand why it would matter if she lives in Macon County, you say?
Yes, ma'am.
So there are at least three counties that border, that are within a thirty-mile radius of the borders of Sangamon County, I think, three, maybe four. What difference does it make? If we're going to have somebody who can live outside the Sangamon County, what difference does it make if she lives in Macon County?
Alderman Dove may have an idea on-
Okay, Alderman Dove.
My question was just, you know, in terms of it, Triun is located in Oakbrook. I don't know for sure, because I wasn't-
Yes, they're a Chicago suburban company.
But is the reasoning behind this for them residing in Sangamon County within thirty miles, is that so they could get local bidder preference?
No.
And does that hurt?
No, the employment of the nurse case manager has nothing to do with local vendor preference. It had nothing to do with the award of this contract.
I'm just trying to think in terms of what the wording was in the-
I would imagine, quite honestly, and I'll have to correct something that Mr. Greenberg had said, this, these case managers do in fact attend doctor's visits in many cases. They do sometimes meet with the employees. A lot of this is done via telephone and other ways, but they do actually pay visits to our doctors and stuff. So we wanted somebody who was in the area, obviously, for that very reason. We wanted somebody who was accessible to our employees, and that's probably why it was put in there. I honestly can't remember two, three years ago when we did this, why exactly it was put in there, but clearly we wanted somebody in the area, not somebody commuting from, say, Oakbrook.
And I don't know if there was a misinterpretation where I said they don't go to the site. I meant they don't actually go to where the employees had an accident or something like that. It's basically a nine-to-five weekday job. So it is not difficult for the person, even if they live slightly outside of Sangamon County, to be at a doctor's appointment or something like that.
Alderman Edwards.
Well, I mean, it was part of, part of the contract, and I can come up with all kinds of reasons why I was there, whether doctor's visits, in case you have to go in front of the Labor Board on a dispute, maybe you got to console with our attorneys over a case management. I mean, there's all kinds of reasons I can understand why they live in Sangamon County. We're kind of the hub of a medical district in a state, at least south of I-80 we are, and I could probably name off top my list, off top my head, a dozen nurses that I know that do this for the state, that live within our community. And I-
You could send us their names, that'd be great. Maybe they want a job.
I think, well, I think it's absolutely ridiculous that we can't find a nurse that can manage our healthcare program, our disability, whatever you call it, in our community, that we have to go outside the community and we sit around and brag about how healthcare helps fund our community, and we can't put people in our county to work? I mean, really? I, I think we need to come up with a better reason why we had to go outside other than we couldn't find somebody. I'm, I'm sorry. That's ridiculous.
Alderman Tyler. Okay. Alderman McMenamin, then Alderman Cammon.
This is, question is directed to Director McCarty. Is Triun Health Group, are they providing services to the county?
To the county, yes, they are.
Okay. That may be the source of why the contract was written the way it was. Is this same problem then applicable to the county? Do you happen to know? In other words-
I don't believe they have the same case manager that we do. We did a joint bid several years ago, and that, you're right, I hadn't thought about that, but that could be a reason why that language was in there. It could have been something that the county wanted, I really don't recall. But we did do a joint bid for this particular service. They are utilizing Triun as well, but I do not believe they have the same case manager.
I show the comments that Alderman, any words made about this?
Alderman Cammon?
Yeah, thank you. Director McCarty, so this nurse is an employee of Triun?
Correct.
Right. Okay. And who are, there's three positions, so this amendment deals with not just the nurse, but it says employees mentioned in item one, two, and three above. Who are the other two positions?
I don't have that in front of me.
Okay. But you get, you can get that for, to us after the council meeting? Now, I mean, if we don't pass this contract modification, then what is Triun going to do?
We'll have to talk to Triun to see what they're going to do. It certainly would put the city in a bit of predicament in that we've already, as far as I know, and I'll have to double-check this, but I believe they've already worked to transition the new case manager in, and that was one of the reasons why it was important to get someone in more quickly, is so that they could train with the current case manager and transition all of the cases that were in flux.
Well, I assume that Triun told this, whoever this person is that they hired from Macon County, that, you know, your employment is contingent on the city council ratifying a change in the contract, and so that person must know that, you know, there's a possibility that that might not get ratified, since we don't just represent things.
Not, not being a party to the conversations, I hesitate to speculate on what was and wasn't said.
Well, anyways, if they were prudent, they would have done that. I, I mean, obviously, we don't know what Triun did.
Alderman Simpson?
If Triun was aware of the language in the, in the agreement, and they didn't adhere to it, that's not our fault. That's their fault. So they need to either have this nurse make plans to move within Sangamon County, and I'm not even for this, this thirty-mile radius thing, or the contract is null and void, I would think, because I agree with Alderman Edwards. With all our hospital systems, we can't find somebody, I mean, how was it advertised? It, it just, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And I'm sure it doesn't make a lot of sense to the members of the public who are watching us.
Alderman, Alderman Tyler just asked, is anybody from the company here, from Triun here this evening?
I, not that I'm aware of, but certainly between now and next week, we'll get more detail on, on what transpired and provide that to the council.
I'd be willing to withdraw my debate motion.
Leave it in committee.
Tell him to be here in two weeks.
Yep. Could we do-
Director?
I'm going to withdraw my motion, we'll just leave it in committee. Okay.
Twenty fourteen oh ninety-two is an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with Paul O'Shea for planning and design services in an amount not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars from March twenty-seventh, twenty fourteen through March twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move for consent.
Second.
There's a motion for the consent agenda and a second A discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Twenty fourteen oh ninety-three is an ordinance authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement with Enos Park Development LLC for assistance in acquiring various properties in the Enos Park Neighborhood Tax Increment Financing District for redevelopment purposes utilizing Enos Park Neighborhood Tax Increment Finance Funds in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move for debate.
Second.
There's a motion for the debate agenda and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Twenty fourteen zero ninety-four is an ordinance to increase the number of Class A liquor licenses by one for Miss Kimmy's LLC, doing business as Miss Kimmy's located at seven oh one C Durkin Drive.
Move to consent.
Second. There's a motion for the consent agenda and a second, any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion. Alderman McMenamin.
I'll be voting no on this one next week. I did drive by, this is a small strip mall right to the south of the Ie Chateau, and it, you know, it's about five hundred square feet, so I assume this is another video gaming parlor, and for all the reasons that I voted no on these in the past, I view this as a, it's really going contrary to the General Assembly legislative intent in the sense that they're getting these liquor licenses just as a pro forma effort to justify the video gaming, and it's, we got these all over the town now, so I just wanted to explain the no vote next week. Thanks.
Alderman Simpson?
Just, and, and, you know, if, if the intent of the legislature is being misinterpreted, then that's an issue that perhaps the legislature needs to deal with, because it's very clear that it says the only thing you need to do to get a video gaming license is have a liquor license. So, you know, I mean, I don't know that this violates the intent of the legislature, because it's very broad. Anybody who can qualify for a liquor license can get a video gaming parlor.
Any further discussion?
Good answer.
Yes, Alderman Cammon.
Question for Alderman McMenamin, is this in your ward?
It's in mine.
Ward eight, okay.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Twenty fourteen zero ninety-five is an ordinance approving an agreement in an amount not to exceed four-hundred-and-forty-two thousand one hundred dollars with Toshiba International Corporation for inspection and maintenance of the Dahman Power Plant Unit Number Four Turbine for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second. There's a motion for consent and second A discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Twenty fourteen zero ninety-six is an ordinance terminating the contract approved by ordinance two eighty-four oh eight thirteen and approving and authorizing execution of a new agreement with Ibitum Serum Environmental Incorporated in an amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand three hundred dollars for catalyst regeneration on units thirty-one and thirty-two for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second. There's a motion for the consent agenda and a second A discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Twenty fourteen zero ninety-seven is an ordinance accepting and authorizing execution of contract with Buckman Laboratories Incorporated in an amount not to exceed four-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars for the purchase of oxymine chemical for the Dahman, for the Dahman, excuse me, generating station for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second. Motion for the consent agenda and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Twenty fourteen zero ninety-eight is an ordinance approving two separate proposals totaling one-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars with stress engineering services incorporated for high-energy pipe inspections and flow-accelerated corrosion testing at Dahman Units Thirty-Three for the Electric Division for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second. There's a motion for the consent agenda and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Twenty fourteen zero ninety-nine is an ordinance authorizing execution of a letter offer for extension, approving a one-year contract extension and authorizing additional funding in an amount of sixty-one thousand two hundred dollars under contract number UW thirteen oh two seventy-eight, carbon dioxide with Continental Carbonic Products Incorporated for a total amount payable of one-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second. Motion for the consent agenda and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Twenty fourteen one hundred is an ordinance dedicating zero-point-one-zero-three acres of land owned by the City of Springfield between the Tenth Street Railroad and the Eleventh Street Carpenter Street for public road purposes.
Move to consent.
Second. There's a motion for the consent agenda and a second A discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Twenty fourteen one oh one is an ordinance approving the location sketch map of Piper Glen eleventh edition for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second. Motion for the consent agenda and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Twenty fourteen one oh two is an ordinance regarding the variance request of section one fifty-three point one fifty-eight B two pertaining to lot arrangements at Springfield Technology Park for the Office of Public Works.
Move for approval on the consent agenda.
Second. There's a motion and a second for approval on the consent agenda, see, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Twenty fourteen one oh three is an ordinance approving the revised location and sketch map of Springfield Technology Park for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second. Motion for the consent agenda and a second A discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Twenty fourteen one oh four is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW fourteen oh one eighty-five with Truman L Flat and Sons Company Incorporated to furnish construction on the twenty-fifteen Batumidus Overlays Program Part A in an amount not to exceed ten million four-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars seventy-six cents for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Okay, there's, I, I believe the debate motion had it first, so there's a motion for debate and a second, any discussion? Seeing, yes, Alderman McMenamin.
We've got this ordinance which will spend roughly ten-point-five million, and then the, the next one with a different contractor will spend ten-point-nine. And just information question, did, did we get multiple bids on, on these two, we call them plan Part A streets and Part B streets?
Yes, we did. We got at least two bids on each of those parts. These are large projects, and obviously they have to be able to handle and produce asphalt.
Thank you very much.
Chairman?
Yes, Alderman Cammon.
And did the local bidder, our local bidder provision come into play at all on this?
I don't know if, they're both, the one that bid, we're both local bidders.
Okay.
They were pretty close to bids.
I mean, we've got a law that if the local bidder is a certain percentage higher than a non-local bidder, we go to the local. That's what I'm talking about. You don't know if that came into play?
I have to check. It was 200,000 off, so I don't think it did. They got the low bid regardless of that.
And these, this and the next one, those, these are part of our three-year infrastructure revamping program? Is that correct, or?
Yes, correct. Actually, all three of the bids were all local bidders.
Any further, any further discussion? There's a motion and a second for the debate agenda. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
2014-105 is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW140185 with United Contractors Midwest Incorporated to furnish construction on the 2015 Batumidus Overlay Program Part B in an amount not to exceed $10,993,682.18 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to debate.
Second. There's a motion for the debate agenda and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
2014-106 is an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with and payment in an amount not to exceed $152,000 to Hanson Professional Services Incorporated for the Cook Street Sanitary Sewer Study for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second. There's a motion for the consent agenda and a second A discussion. Yes, Alderman Simpson. Director.
What are we hoping they're going to tell us from this study?
They're doing analysis in that area. It's an area that we haven't done thorough analysis of and studied for quite a long time. And we expect there's probably some projects, and there are some mining projects, maybe some reconstruction that needs to be done to help with a lot of the issues that we have in that area. So, it's really the start of what probably will, projects will be generated from that information.
Have we had, we've had a number of sewer collapses around that area, like on 11?
There's backups, collapses, a lot of, it's an older part of the city, so there's a lot of issues going on there.
We get complaints from citizens.
Complaints from citizens, all those kind of things all played into this, is focusing on this area.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for the director? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor for the consent agenda say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
2014-107 is an ordinance approving the appointment of Brian P. Burns to the Mechanical Commission.
Move for consent.
Second. There's a motion for the consent agenda and a second A discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
2014-108 is an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for purchase of real property founded by 4th Street, Capitol Avenue, 5th and Jackson Streets using central area tax increment finance funds in an amount of $1,536,950 with the state of Illinois and a contract for purchase of the three parcels from 310 East Adams LLC using central area tax increment finance funds in an amount not to exceed $25,000 for a total amount for both contracts not to exceed $1,561,950 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move for debate.
Second. There's a motion for the debate agenda and a second. Before, before discussion, just to make a point before Director Farmer steps to the table, podium, there is a new ordinance, the Corporation Council wanted, there is some new language changes that didn't make it into the original ordinance when it was filed in regards to an advisory committee that myself and Mike Farmer's office and Victoria Ringer at DSI came to an agreement with, with other parties. And that language is in the ordinance that was put at your table this evening. That's the ordinance.
Proposed amendment number one.
Correct.
I'll move for adoption of proposed amendment number one.
Second. There's a motion and a second for amendment number one. Any discussion on the amendment?
So, all this does is create a steering committee?
An advisory committee.
Advisory committee, which would be appointed by the mayor?
It's correct. It would be, an advisory committee would be chosen, members would be chosen from the Greater Springfield Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Springfield, Inc., the Quantum Growth Partnership, the Heritage Foundation, the SDAT Action Team, and the Historic Preservation Fund of the Community Foundation of Lincolnland, as well as other mayoral appointees, and shall include the Ward Six Alderman.
Yeah, I would, and maybe it should also include the Ward Five Alderman, who also is the downtown Alderman.
Well, this project's not in your ward, but I'll take this into consideration with the mayor's office.
Yeah, well, we could talk about it.
Okay. Director, oh, any further, Alderman McMenamin.
Yeah, I commend Alderman Jobe for this type of approach on the Tiff district to get a committee approach on a major redevelopment agreement. And it just, by coincidence, it's the same kind of approach I wish we had been able to successfully launch with the MacArthur Tiff by getting Town and Country Shopping Center involved, even the municipality of Jerome and the others, the Chamber of Commerce that originally really promoted the MacArthur Tiff, so that the decisions on redevelopment agreements have a broader back and forth in checks and balances and input and buy-in by those. So, I really think this is a great idea, Alderman Jobe. I think you're going in the right direction with a committee approach on some of these major projects where we want to see a greater amount of input and cooperative effort.
Any other discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment number one say aye. Those opposed, okay. Now, discussion on the ordinance as amended. Director Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The mayor, the mayor asked that I, this is a project that is over a decade in the making and has a long history. And so, I'm dragging the carcass here to City Council for you tonight, but we're very excited about this. And it's been an endeavor that I think began actually before I came to work for the, for the city of Springfield. And we're at a point now, after low these many years and, and just an awful lot of hard work, to finally take a block that has sat basically idle in the surface lot and a bad surface lot to build. And it also, at one time housed the YWCA before it shuttered their operations. And I thought for the benefit of the council and perhaps others in the community, we might do a quick step back and see how we got here. So, oops, excuse me, got ahead of us here. This is the proposed revitalization of the block that's founded by 4th, 5th, Capitol, Jacksons, we all know. We have an aerial here that shows, again, what would otherwise be described as a surface parking lot for state of Illinois and the YWCA in your lower right. Again, not even a good surface parking lot. I don't, I couldn't tell you the last time it was striped. The city has attempted to improve the surrounding properties by means of streetscape and some other improvements, but clearly, this is a critical block for redevelopment and sits virtually in the heart of our central area. And low these many years, it's been looking exactly like this, which is, in many ways, unacceptable. And as Paul O'Shea will tell you, very frequently, people come into our office and ask us how they can buy this lot for redevelopment, how can we get our hands on it? We have to tell them the state of Illinois. So, when I started here 10 years ago, Mayor Dablin instructed me to reach out to the state of Illinois, and we made many trips over to the governor's office, to Secretary of State's office, and various other governmental entities to find out how we could do this. And it's taken quite a long time. A lot of people don't know what sat there before. This would have been a great Tiff redevelopment project, the Abraham Lincoln Hotel that sat on this particular site. And we all kind of know what happened to that particular site after it closed its stores in the early 70s and wanted to show you what it looked like back in the heydays when it was quite a magnet. And again, would have been a terrific property for rehabilitation or Tiff project much like the Orpheum Theater would have been low these many years ago, too. But we all know what happened in 19...
Okay, go ahead.
Don't get ahead of me, Alderman. In 1978, the site was purchased by the state and the good old Abraham Lincoln was imploded. And this is a picture of it coming down. And again, a lot of people that haven't lived in Springfield, weren't here, are unaware of what, what was actually there and what happened. This is the final frame of the implosion, and I actually was on the steps of the state Capitol watching this, was a very large crowd, it was kind of a spectacle in the central area way back then. Of course, we know what sits there now, the YWCA, which has transferred ownership several times, and it's our intention to buy this as a separate parcel aside from the state's property. This particular property has serious environmental issues. The roof is, is collapsing, there's lead, asbestos, and mold within the building. As they like to say about a building, its bones are strong, but it has internal problems. And additively to that is the, the old International Hostel, which is clearly a blighted property and hasn't been used in probably more than a dozen years. Obviously, this is an area that's undergone a lot of transformation, and it's a, it's a vital block with respect to its location next to the Executive Mansion. The Illinois Association of Realtors has done a creative infill on a, on a surface parking lot there several years ago. The city has spent an awful lot of money on Capitol Avenue. We've assisted with Tiff funds, the I M B, the Illinois Association of Community Colleges. And again, it's a property that's ripe for redevelopment. So, how did we get here? As I mentioned, we approached state of Illinois a long time ago for disposition. And we testified, they testified several years ago at a hearing when Governor Blagojevich was trying to identify the best uses for surplus property and the Capitol Campus. We petitioned, again, several governors, Secretaries of State, General Assembly, to see how we might work out a deal to, you know, get our arms around this and control this property. And we worked with elected officials at every level. And then last year, it was declared surplus by, actually transferred over from the Secretary of State's office under the domain of Central Manager's Services, and they declared a surplus and began their property disposition process. So, our next steps are to purchase the parcels, establish the mayor's advisory council, which was just discussed a second ago, with, with input from the community in this, this committee fashion, a request for qualifications and a request for proposals, get those documents ready, and then put this, put this project out for some type of bid. We want to select qualified, experienced, private developer, offer certain municipal, municipally-approved incentives with sufficient assurances from the developer, I should have added, from the developer, and then partner with qualified a developer to design and construct this redevelopment. Some conceptual considerations, we would like a mixed-use creative infill design that includes, if possible, residential, retail, office. It complements the surrounding areas, the Executive Mansion, the I M B, or other enhancements that we've made in that neighborhood. Some, some parking, obviously, whether above or below grade, a green space that's sustainable, it's pedestrian, bicycle-friendly, provides that sense of place. Perhaps the Jackson Street Historical Preservation Corridor can be included in this redevelopment project, otherwise known as the Jackson Street Trail. We have a consideration of the town branch, which cuts across the southwest two parcels on this particular block, and of course, what's to become of the YWCA. I just want to throw out a couple of conceptual designs that Paul O'Shea has provided me, and just to give you some idea of what it might look like, again, very preliminary, very conceptual, and perhaps even a tad over optimistic. With that, I would just like to conclude by saying that, as I mentioned, Mayor Dablin, Mayor Edwards, Mayor Houston, Governor Pat Quinn, Senator Durbin, Secretary Jesse White, Senators Larry Bonkey, Rep. Raymond Poe, Rich Brower, more recently Alderman Jobe, and Senator Andy Manar have stepped up in our efforts to, to work with the state. But I really want to compliment the staff at CMS, the director, Terry Sherholtz and Rick Tate, who have been the worker bees and helped us, the city worker bees, try to get our arms around this. And I would also want to point out that in May 22, 2012, this very council passed a resolution authoring us to, to pursue this particular acquisition. So, with that, I'd be free to respond to any questions.
Now, I'd like to just follow up with Director, the comments that Director Farmer's made. I want to echo, this really couldn't have been possible over the last two years without Governor Quinn, Senator Dick Durbin, especially Bill Houlihan from his office. State Senator Andy Manar, when he was a candidate for state senate, I had met with him when I got elected Alderman. And obviously, Mayor Houston and his administration, it's been a big team effort from all of us, working day in and day out with then Malcolm Weems, who was the CMS director and now it's under new leadership, really understanding the importance of this block as really the catalyst for future growth in our downtown community, and especially being in such close proximity to the governor's mansion and the state Capitol complex. So, it's been a big effort from not only elected officials and city staff like Director Farmer and Paul O'Shea, but I know a lot of members are here from DSI and the Jackson Trail and SDAT. So, there's a lot of players, and we've got a long way to go, but I think this is a positive move forward. Alderman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any problem with this, this concept, the idea, because I think it's great. I think it's going to be great for downtown Springfield. I think it will bring great interest from tourists beyond just, you know, the square blockage of Lincoln. Depending on the ideas that will come forth, could provide housing to, to bring our young people back into the city. What I, what I would hope that you, perhaps will take back to the mayor, you, Alderman Jobe, looking at this list, there's not a lot of diversity, because I've been involved with, with many of these organizations. We need to make sure that the mayor appoints...
Yeah, those are just potential candidates for the advisory council.
Okay.
I think there'll be plenty of time for that discussion.
It needs diversity, because everybody has ideas.
Sure.
And I think the more diverse this group is, I think the better for the city as a whole.
Alderman. Alderman Kinnaman.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with, wholeheartedly with Chairman Jobe. This is a great project for the downtown represented by Alderman Jobe and myself, as well as the whole Capitol Complex area, and really our entire city. I think it's, we need to do more to develop the central core. There's been too much development on the, you know, on the outskirts. There's a, there's a word for that. I can't think of it right now.
Sprawl.
Sprawl, thank you. And I did have a question, well, a couple of questions. First, those conceptual drawings, were any of those, the University of Illinois architecture students had done some, you know, do you know if any, no, those weren't from any of them?
Years ago.
I didn't think so.
They probably all graduated as architects now.
Oh, they have some, you know, good ideas. Who knows what'll work there? But also, you mentioned the town branch going through there. What, what were you referring to?
The sewers.
The sewer, oh, the town branch sewer line.
Yes.
All right, thanks. Good work.
One other, one other thing, Alderman.
Yes.
Keep in mind, too, that once railroad relocation kicks in and the third rail, there's some ideas that could really coordinate with, with this plan, too, in terms of what's going on.
Absolutely. I didn't list all the considerations I threw. Yeah, certainly, that's an excellent point.
Thank you, Director Farmer. I know we had one more speaker, Victoria Ringer, the executive director of Downtown Springfield Inc. wanted to speak on behalf of Downtown Springfield Inc. and business owners and members. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Victoria Ringer, executive director of Downtown Springfield Inc., 1801 South Langwood, Springfield. I, I echo everything that Mike Farmer said, and we have worked very closely with him, his office, Alderman Jobe, the DSI Heritage Foundation. That building, the Y, is something that we'd love to save. It may be beyond repair, but that's what kind of started our thoughts about a committee. Not only, I found all of these studies that have been done the last 12 years about downtown, the AIA Architects, that vision is here, SDAT, RUDAT, the Clue Group Study, all of these point to that block as being significant. We're so glad that the mayor and, and his administration and so many other stakeholders believe like we do that this can be a catalyst for development for the future. We believe that it can set the tone for how we would like our downtown to look in the future. And there's wonderful things that have happened with Tiff money surrounding that block. This is going to accumulate with this wonderful project. We believe that those stakeholders that have put time into these studies over the past few years, along with many others and new ones, can guide the mayor, it's not a binding committee, but to advise, to say to a developer, maybe the Y would be a good, be good on that block. Maybe you can make it the cornerstone of your development, maybe you can't. But we believe that these people and all of these studies and money that's been spent on these studies, that those comments and review and analysis need to be provided as input for the development of our, our biggest economic development project in downtown in many, many years. So, we thank the mayor, we thank Mike Farmer, we thank Alderman Jobe, Andy Manar, all those people that have helped over the last few years. And we are going to do everything possible to make sure this is a shining example of how to do things right in downtown Springfield. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Victoria. All right, so we have a motion. Yes, Alderman Kinnaman.
Just to follow up to Alderman Kinnaman's request to be on the committee, your ward is across the street, is that right?
Correct.
I note that under the ward remap, this block would fall in Ward Two, Alderman Simpson's ward, is that correct?
It has, yes.
Okay. And question, Alderman Jobe, have you seen the appraisal from the state of Illinois on this, on the block that, on the portion of the block that's owned by the city, the state of Illinois?
No, I have not.
Okay.
Any further, just got questions, discussions? There's a motion and a second for the debate agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
2014-0109 is an ordinance authorizing execution of an integrated supply agreement between Genuine Parts Company, doing business as NAPA Auto Parts, NAPA, and the City of Springfield, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $3,750,000 from March 1st, 2014 through February 28th, 2017, for the Office of Budget and Management.
I'd like to leave this in committee, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion and a second to leave and commit.
2014-110 is an ordinance authorizing an additional $65,000 to purchase rock salt from Cargill Incorporated Salt Division under state contract PSD 4017550 for a total amount not to exceed $326,950 for the Office of Public Works.
There's a motion for the consent agenda and a second. Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Any unfinished business? Any? Oh. Yes, that's a good one. Yeah, I will, under, oh, under citizens. Any new business?
New business.
Okay. Any new business? Alderman Simpson?
Thank you. I would like for Mr. McCarty to come back with and let this council know many more particulars about 2014-109. Who bid? How the agreement was, came about? Who was part of the agreement? I need all of those questions answered. I need to know if consideration was given to local vendors?
They are a local vendor.
NAPA Auto Parts is a local vendor?
The, the.
They have a store here.
Yes, they're, like O'Reilly's has a store here, but they're a corporation. We buy from O'Reilly's as well. They're, but NAPA is a local vendor.
Alderman, if we can just, if you, I'm.
Can you just answer all those questions for me, whether it was put out to bid and all of that?
Director McCarty, can you get that to Joe Davis?
Yeah, if I.
I don't want to get back and forth with an exchange.
No, no, that's fine. I had sent this out five days prior to going on first reading, and so, I mean, I could have answered all these questions.
Any other new business?
I need it in writing, sir.
Okay. We went, all right, citizens, we have a couple people that want to speak, citizens request to address the committee. I know Joan Walters wanted to speak to us tonight. Is she still with us? And I know Bob Great, I didn't know if you were both going to speak to.
Bob's too shy.
Oh, I can't believe that.
I know, it's hard to believe.
Well, I know, Bob. Joan, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Joan Walters, and I live at 201 East Adams Street in Springfield, Illinois. With me is Jeff Fulgenzi. I represent the Citizens Efficiency Commission, and Jeff served as staff to that commission. Bob and I were on the Public Works Committee, and we were, in fact, the people that started the conversation about having an inventory management system. We started in July of 2012 to look at the issue of consolidated garages for both the county and the city. As you know, we're a Sangamon County-wide commission, so we're looking at trying to create efficiencies across governments, and we saw this as an opportunity to really save a lot of money by having a central facility that could be used by all jurisdictions. And as you know, there are many jurisdictions within this county. However, at the same time that we came up with that thought, the city and county independently started looking at centralized garages, which we think is a great step. We then started looking at inventory control systems, because as you know, garages can be very expensive places. A lot of times, they're full of obsolete parts that are never used. There's often slippage, often there's delays in getting cars out in the street, or any vehicles, for that matter, and when you think of the variety of vehicles that the city would have, ranging all the way from a simple car to a fire truck, police cars that need to get on the road, because you don't have in excess, I'm sure, of extra cars. So we tried to think of ways that could make that process more efficient, and began looking at companies that offer that service. And NAPA was the one that came to our attention. We had them down to visit with us, and it may of interest to you to know that we had members of the committee that actually went up to the City of Chicago and the City of Aurora to look at their operations. They used NAPA as a result of bidding to use as an inventory control system, and have been very happy with it. It's been a successful operation. It's lowered transaction costs and it's increased efficiency. So I realize that the price tag is big, and you probably have many questions about it, but it's intended to, in the long run, save money, and hopefully someday, other jurisdictions can even help to lower the cost by joining in this operation and allowing the garage, centralized garage, to handle even a greater variety of customers, which would, in fact, be more effective for the city's dollar investment. If you have technical questions, we have a recommendation that we can forward to you in case it helps you to understand what our thinking was in coming to this conclusion, which I can share with you. And Jeff is here as an expert staff person. We're policy people, but Jeff could provide any particular detailed questions that you might have of me. And thank you so much for your time after a long meeting.
Joan, thank you. If we could have either Jeff or somebody from the Efficiency Commission, Bob, I know Bob sent me many reports, could we get that information?
Yes, sir.
To Joe Davis?
Yes.
And Joe could distribute it to the Alderman, that piece of the report. Alderman Edwards had a question?
Yeah, I, many years ago, under Chair Nasser, I was a director, and went to Chicago and visited how they did it, and was pretty impressed with the way they did it. Sitting in the seats different than being a director and going to a garage and watching how it works, and I've always been in favor of the consolidation of the garages, even as a director, I thought it was the way we should do business. It's kind of a holdover of the old commission form of government where everybody has their domain and they get to operate in their own little world. So I think that we are for this. Now, the other flip side of that is, in due diligence, as you sit in this seat, you get companies that come to you and go, it wasn't very open, it wasn't very forthright. When we'd ask questions, answers didn't come our ways, and now all of a sudden, we were kind of held at arm's length, and NAPA was the company of choice. That may be a good thing, that may not be a good thing, and now, we get a chance to go back to them and say, we did our due diligence, and this is why they were picked. So, I wouldn't put too much stock in it being held in committee, other than we've had companies, me in particular, had companies come to me and say, they weren't very forthright with us, we didn't get any answers, we didn't get a chance, and we'll ask those questions, as Alderman Simpson put forth. And as you know, above all, Joan, it's transparency. You have to let everybody have their day, and this is the first we've really seen of NAPA, this first, so it's going to be held in committee. And now, Director McCarty and the Director of the Garage, Mike, will have to lay out how we arrived at this, and let it be open so the public can see it, and we'll move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, both of you. We have two more individuals who have requested to speak in regards to the two ordinances that Joan just spoke. Oh, I'm sorry. I even wrote down, I apologize.
That's all right, that's all right. I don't hold this as a Joan, or a Jeff, or a, it's just when I was reading through this the other night, and I was writing a couple, one of the questions that popped out to me was, the concept, maybe I got this wrong, you might have to dumb this down for me, but the concept is, they're going to set up shop, we're going to have a contract that we're buying things through them. That's the idea. How can we put a price tag on that? I mean, we have a not-to-exceed number, that, if we're only going to buy what we're going to buy, and what if we spent $3,750,000, are we going to quit buying parts at that time? I mean, why do we even put a price tag on this? Why don't we just say, this is how we're going to set it up, and we're going to spend what we're going to spend? We don't buy parts now that we don't want or need. I honestly, I just didn't know how this three-seven figure just popped up.
Alderman Griffin, I don't want to interrupt, but I believe there are representatives here from NAPA Auto Parts who are going to speak, or be available for questions when we brought that up. Would you want that?
That was actually my number. I can speak to it.
Oh, okay, Director, one time.
Yeah. Well, anytime the council gets an ordinance, as you should, you'd like to see a fiscal impact. And so, the number was calculated based, between Mike and I, based on, A, the amount of parts that we buy or have been buying in a given year, which is approximately $1 million, give or take. That's really what the majority of that number is, is just our parts purchases. And then, of course, there'll be overhead costs associated with the operation of the parts room. So, when we looked at all of that, we went with a conservative amount of 3.7 million, but based on the analysis that Mr. Palazzolo has done with regards to potential savings of around 20%, then also looking at the potential savings on the overhead versus what we're paying right now for overhead and personnel, we don't expect to even reach $3.7 million. It's just more of a conservative number as a not-to-exceed. We have a lot of contracts that are not-to-exceed where we expend less, but that's just to give the council a number that they can rely on, that there will be the upper echelon of this particular contract, that we do not expect to get there. So, again, most of that is your parts, and we spend $1 million or so a year on parts.
Maybe that's my question.
There should be a discounted factor due to the efficiency of the system, and so that exponent.
So we're going to get the parts cheaper?
That is, according to the analysis that Mr. Palazzolo's done, and we have been working and doing due diligence on this for probably one and a half years or so. We've visited a lot of different communities. We've actually gone with the Efficiency Committee up to Chicago to look at their operation and speak with their representatives. And part of that due diligence simply was, if we're going to look at doing this, is there going to be savings? If so, in what areas, and what is it going to be? Well, Mr. Palazzolo did a check of random 172 parts that are utilized across the four different garages, and based on his analysis of what we paid versus what NAPA would have charges, or be charging us for those parts, we're looking at approximately 20% savings, which would represent around $200,000 a year on savings in our parts. That's just the part savings. From the standpoint of personnel, we're looking at approximately $350,000 a year in savings in that. So we're looking at over half a million dollars a year in savings on our parts operation. And that is, let alone, the costs associated with producing an inventory and setting up an inventory, because the nice, one of the many nice things about this contract is, the inventory is theirs to procure. We don't own a part until it comes across the counter and into our mechanic's hands. So there's no upfront cost for inventory whatsoever. We also don't have the risk of obsolescence. They buy a part that we don't use, that's on them, it's not on us. So, you know, all of those things we looked at when we came up with presenting this to the city, to the councils, the best possible option, and of course, the Citizens Efficiency Committee agrees with that assessment.
So what's the, I forget what you call it, the administration charge, what's?
The, well, that, mostly it's the personnel that are in there. They will be NAPA employees, but of course, we will pay for them.
We're paying their salaries?
Yes. And that's how this operation works.
Providing employees, meaning they were providing, the pay for them.
No, we are buying the parts at a discounted rate versus what you would pay, say you walk into a store, a significant discount. We're paying cost plus 10%, which is what's in the agreement. Based on our conversations with others, when you walk into a typical auto parts store, the part is marked up 35 to 40% to cover the overhead. So we're just paying the overhead directly. But bear in mind, again, I want to emphasize, when you talk about the cost to personnel, right now, the personnel that we have, or the personnel that we had in there when this all started, was five individuals that had over $400,000 a year in salary and benefits. The two personnel that will be staffing the parts room under this agreement will be somewhere in the $80,000 range total. So, again, you're looking at some tremendous savings on the personnel side of things. Yes, we will pay for them, but again, it's all part of the arrangement, and this is a common arrangement that countless cities across the country are utilizing.
I would like to remind Alderman that this is being held in committee. If you have further questions, we can proceed, but there are two other individuals who have asked to speak on this topic, and.
I have a question.
Okay, Alderman.
Mr. Chair. I guess, so we're employing, we're paying NAPA employees to sell us parts. Did we even go to the other national chains to see what deals we could have gotten from them? I'm sure other national chains, I don't have anything against NAPA, but I'm sure that other national chains could do the same thing that NAPA does, set up a store in a facility and sell us parts, and we pay their employees. What kind of deal are we getting? Do we do a comparison to see if we could get some kind of deal on parts? And we're getting a deal from NAPA, but could we have gotten a better deal from some of the other parts? Or are we just, just because Chicago dealt with NAPA, Aurora dealt with NAPA, we decide we're going to deal with NAPA?
Again, this isn't an operation, or, excuse me, this isn't a decision we made overnight. We have been looking at this for quite some time. We have done a lot of due diligence. We have looked at other operations. NAPA actually pioneered this, and this is relatively new. It's not something that's been around for a terribly long time, and the NAPA guys can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but they did pioneer this. They are the most mature in this industry, and yes, we did look at other options. We did talk to other fleet managers out there who have looked at other options. In fact, Aurora went out for bid and got three bids, ended up choosing NAPA based on a comparison. We, they were kind enough to share that information with us, and we saw the work that they did, the procurement work and the comparison. So, all of the research that we've done, and again, the Efficiency Committee has done pretty much the same type of research, we've all come to the conclusion that, at this point in time, the NAPA operation is the best, in the best interest of the city, will save us the most money and be the most efficient. And one of the other things I might add here is that we are procuring this off of the National NJPA Contractor Procurement Group, which I believe stands for National Joint Powers Alliance. It's a national procurement group. They did the heavy lifting, they went out for bid, they solicited a procurement for a parts operation of this nature, and NAPA was who they chose. So, a lot of work has done, has gone into the procurement, and in working with and looking at other potential vendors, but at the end of the day, the NJPA, the Efficiency Committee, countless fleet managers we've spoken to, and of course, what we found through our own research, all points to NAPA being the best option at this point in time.
Mr. Fulgenzi, please patiently wait it.
Thank you, Alderman, and I'll be very brief. Jeff Fulgenzi with the Regional Planning Commission here on behalf of my director, who's rooting on his Wildcats at the moment, but we offer a staff to come back. I understand you may have additional questions, but our work with the Efficiency Commission on any number of issues we dealt with was consistent with the philosophy of recommendations that the Efficiency Commission adopted very early on, which indicated they were going to study issues exhaustively, use sources and citations, and prepare information that is very transparent. And we did, on behalf of the CEC, spend a great deal of time with the Efficiency Commission members, doing an exhaustive review of the available resources, and we did, in fact, spend time in Chicago with NAPA, and we did, in fact, look for other comparable entities. And I think the information that you've heard tonight is consistent with what the Efficiency Commission found out, and we will certainly send that report out tonight, and found that, you know, the details that they can commit to, 95% in-stock inventory, just-in-time inventory, inventory controls, and, you know, keeping your fleet in operation with that just-in-time inventory were tremendous assets that, from our review on behalf of the Efficiency Commission, was, were attributes that few other providers could provide. So, and again, be happy to come back and share more details.
Thank you, Jeff. Alderman Edwards?
Yeah, those are the kind of reports that need to be let to the public, so that when you spend this kind of money, and you say, this is who we're picking, when those reports come out, and, because we do get besieged by the other vendors, saying we were, whether they were or they weren't.
I understand. The Efficiency Commission reports are on our website at the Planning Commission, sscrpc.com. I think there were 23 of them, and we did.
We all have a copy of that as well.
Okay.
The full report. It was put in our mailbox. Alderman Dunn?
I said clarification. On the employees that we have, you said they are going to be NAPA employees, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Are they NAPA employees themselves?
The employees under this operation?
Yeah.
Yeah, there will be, certainly.
So, and we're covering their salary?
The NAPA employees, yes. Yeah, that will be part of the.
Who covers their benefits and their liabilities?
We cover that.
So we would be responsible for workers' compensation?
Yes, we're paying for the parts and the overhead. We're paying for the parts and the overhead in exchange for lower costs.
Just a question. Alderman McMenamin and then Alderman Cannon.
So, just the same point, just to clarify, does the 3.75 million, does that include the labor cost?
Yes, that's all in there. Most of that is parts, probably 90% of it, if not more.
Alderman Cannon?
We pay their salary, but the employees are NAPA employees, not city employees.
Correct. We will reimburse NAPA.
Okay. So, we have two other individuals who have signed up to speak in regards to this, the two ordinances, the ordinance, I say two, but just one. Kevin Pierce, is Kevin Pierce in the room? Hi there. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman, my name is Chad Skarpjak, an attorney at Gateswood Schloss, April 1, 2, 3, 1 South 8th Street here in Springfield. To my right is Kevin Pierce, who's the president of Brake and Clutch Exchange, 418...
Can you speak up?
Oh, I'm sorry. 418 South 11th, also in Springfield. As enabled implied, Brake and Clutch Exchange is an independent, locally-owned Springfield parts store that specializes in brakes and clutches. Brake and Clutch Exchange has been an operation in Springfield here for over 44 years. Mr. Pierce is here tonight, basically along the same lines as the concerns that were addressed previously with this body. And what this boils down to is whether or not there have been sufficient alternatives reviewed before looking into this contract and approving. In the packet of documentation that we see tonight, there's a memorandum which states that the proposed purchase is exempt from the competitive sealed bids as it derives from master contract obtained from the National Joint Powers Alliance, which is a public agency up in Minnesota.
Sir, can you speak up, please? We have some Alderman side stuff. Can you please speak up, sir?
Basically, the packet of information tonight said that there were not sealed bids or no need for sealed bids because there was a, as was referenced before, a National Joint Powers Alliance contract. And the question is, and the concern is, is to what extent... Sorry about that. Really, to what extent were the alternative proposals provided or solicited? If we're relying on the NJPA to do the heavy legwork, committee should consider when and to what extent this review was done and is it satisfactory for Springfield? Obviously, what works in Chicago and what works in Aurora may not work here. And also, the committee should look at whether or not local area businesses were given the opportunity to provide or submit proposals that, or throw their hat into the ring. Now, the NAPA proposal may be the best system, it may work, but if we're also looking at cost alternatives, again, local businesses should have been given the opportunity to throw their hat into the ring and provide perhaps alternatives. And I'm, we're presenting this in the light of that March 7 article presented in the State Journal Register. And the fleet manager, which was of Aurora, Illinois, Joe Hopp, said that Aurora had about broken even in costs. And I can't, I don't believe that's a direct quote from him, but it sounds like just about broke even, it's almost below broke even rather than above. So, you know, with that contract in mind, there should be an opportunity for local businesses here to provide, an opportunity to submit proposals. And if that was not done, this committee should reflect on that accordingly. You know, if we're looking at an opportunity to be cost-effective, you know, in any competition, if you're looking, shopping around, you want to compare parts, you want to compare prices, you want to compare alternatives. And if this was done by an agency up in Minnesota, again, we should take a look at exactly what they did, when they did it, and if it's appropriate for Springfield. And also, give our local businesses an opportunity to perhaps innovate and provide alternative proposals or provide alternative bids. As this body is reflecting this night, you know, we have a priority to help local businesses to support local businesses. The general thought is that by giving dollars to local businesses, there's a greater opportunity for the money to stay within the community. While NAPA has stores here, again, look from the perspective of a national chain versus a local independent store such as Mr. Pierce's. Again, we believe these points are important. We appreciate the fact that committee is taking a closer look at this and leaving it within committee. And we act, we'd ask that when it does refer to this and look at this, that it takes into those points of consideration. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you.
Chairman, could I ask him a quick question? Do you consider NAPA that the city's comfortably entering into this contract with to be a local business?
Well, it's, you know, it's the definition of what the ordinance says is a local business. I believe the DBA, I don't have the name in front of me, but I believe that's headquartered in Georgia, Atlanta, Georgia. So, as, you know, national chain versus local chain, you know, we should take, at least take the opportunity to allow other businesses, local independent businesses, to provide an alternative and see if that's comparable or, you know...
There's a NAPA store here in Springfield. Is that owned by the National NAPA Company or is that a franchise? Do you know how to word...
Pardon me? Is it owned by somebody out of Rock?
And Alderman, I don't have the information in front of me.
Thank you. Are there any other, you don't have to sign up, obviously citizens do not have to sign up to speak 24 hours in advance, the committee as a whole, those that had, were registered. Anybody in the audience want to address the council tonight? Okay.
Mister? Can I say something real quick? If you don't mind. Thank you, sir. I just wanted to touch on something that he mentioned there. The gentleman from Aurora and the comments in the paper, we actually got, Mr. Palazzolo got a phone call from that gentleman who had read the story and said that it unfortunately was an inaccurate statement, that in fact, they had experienced savings, so... And he sent Mike some information. If you want to question Mike on that, he's the one who spoke to him, so...
Could you guys just provide that information to their...
Sure, sure, we can do that. And one of the other things, just on local business, real quick, again, I've stated before that NAPA is a local business, but one of the things NAPA will be doing, they can't provide everything. And they've made it clear that they will first look to procure things through our local businesses. What having NAPA and their ability and their national availability does is it just provides more alternatives for the city. But certainly, in a conversation that we've had with them more than once, they will give a preference to local businesses and give them the first opportunity for things that they can't procure through their own procurement channels. So, there will be a lot of still buying from some of the businesses that we buy from today, the Prairie Internationals and potentially Landmark Forwards and that type of thing. So, that's not going to go away necessarily.
Alderman Edwards?
I know you mentioned that it's in our box and we got the agreement. Do we have a copy of the contract that we could review?
A copy of the actual agreement?
Uh-huh.
Yes, I emailed that to all of you on February 28, four days before it was brought to first reading. I did. Every one of you, I bet the email right here, 3:08 PM.
Yeah, that'd be great. Could you...
Alderman Edwards, are you requesting a hard copy put in all of our mailboxes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I can just have Joe print it or I can print it, whatever you want. Sure, we'll do it, no problem.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, comments from the public, do I have a motion for adjournment?
There's someone out there.
Oh, I'm sorry, did not see your hand. Please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Lou Neff. I live 5963 Waldmeyer Road, Rochester, Illinois. We have a Springfield battery company. Been in business over 50 years here in Springfield, Illinois. I provide batteries to the vehicle motor facility at CWLP. It is a top-quality product. They have a 100-month warranty, a three-year free replacement. What type of warranties would NAPA offer the city?
Director?
I'm not focused on warranties right now, sorry.
Okay, no problem, fair question.
We can certainly...
We use Johnson Controls, they're the major manufacturer of batteries and the best manufacturer of batteries in the United States and they're global. NAPA uses Exite, which is at the very bottom in the United States. There's only three major manufacturers. One's Johnson Controls, number one. Tech E-Spin is a number two. And Exite, which NAPA uses for their product, is a number three. Just wanted to put that on record.
All right. Thank you.
Question for the, sir, roughly, how much gross sales do you obtain each year from the city of Springfield in the, in batteries?
Probably, we only deal with the vehicle maintenance facility at CWLP, approximately $12,000 to $14,000 worth a year. Depending. Today, we sold them a battery, industrial battery. NAPA may have a recourse to buy industrial batteries. The product was $5,300. So, I mean, as far as providing their fleet with a good quality battery, we provide it. We stand behind our warranties. But if they have an industrial battery, a lot of them sell, obviously, we came at the lowest bid, three bids.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other public comment?
Can I ask, are you going to get that information to us? And I, and, because I've even got some questions with regard to...
Sure, sure, I'll provide the agreement.
So, I guess, so we're clear, Alderman Simpson, can you provide an email to Director McCarty if things you want or if you...